Well, I would like to say thank you to the President, the Board. To the Board, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to thank you. Very good. We need to call our meeting in order. This is the Yance County Board of Commissioners, Special Department. Joint Meeting with the Yance County Board of Education, Row 6, 2025. Call this meeting in order. It's a very, very short agenda right here. Motion to approve.
Make sense.
We have two, nine and thirty. So one more. Right or second?
Second.
I wasn't prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. There are none. Motion carries.
Well, I'm Jeff. We appreciate everybody being here. Some of you don't remember, but I bet I remember my grandmother's legacy every day. But I don't do it anymore. I would fall into that. We as a board appreciate having an opportunity to sit down with you. We really did. We need to call a meeting in order. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion. I'll see.
All over the paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You got the floor.
So we really do want y'all to come in and, you know, I know that it's been an interesting year overall, an interesting school year, the way this storm went together. But I really do appreciate these boards working together, I think collectively. There's just so much to think about, what we can do when we work together. And the positive influence that you all have, you know, across the county, across the region, the state. And that's why I'd like to share this information with you because there are so many things on here that we still want to see happen in the school districts, say five, 10, 20 years from now. And it takes all of us, being aware of that, it takes all of us working together to make that happen. So, you know, I really do thank you because it means a lot to our boys, but also it really means a lot and makes a difference to our students. And that's what we're grateful for. And so for that, I'm just going to go through. It's very important to see if you have questions or things you want to know or things that you'd like to ask, please just stop me in time. And then when we finish this part of it, I'd like to just take you through the building a little bit. Kane River is going to go through the same type of locations. And so I'd love you to see what you invested in. And that's why I wanted to be here today, so y'all can take a look at it. And it's beautiful. It's really, really pretty. These are solid buildings and awesome for our community. So I just wanted you to take a look at that. So with that, let's take a look at some of our positive stats for the year and for last year. And I love to share this information. And this is what when superintendents have different meetings and stuff, we're getting to share some of the stuff with you. We, you know, we wondered after the hurricane if our students would come back, and they definitely have, and then some. We still have 2,067 students pre-K through 12. We have 54 slots, so to speak, in our pre-Ks. And 44 of those are free, which is great for our community. And right now for next year, we've already signed up 38 pre-K kids. So there are 16 slots left. So if you know any more year olds that need to go away, talk to their parents and let them know because we still have some room with those slots. So we'd love to get those filled up. Yance County is right now ranked 12 for reading and math and science across the state of North Carolina. We're ranked number one for eighth grade science and biology. We are ranked seventh in North Carolina for our EOG scores at the high school. We're ranked fifth best district in western North Carolina for our test scores in grades three through 12. I love this part, despite some of the things that you may have heard or been told. We're ranked first in North Carolina for the lowest teacher attrition rate at 4.05. So we always have some teachers to retire or leave or move or go, but for the most part, our employees are staying in here. We're top two in North Carolina for highly effective teachers. It means that our teachers show a lot of growth in their students from year to year. And so that's also very impressive for our teachers. CTE, we're number one in the state for credential attainment, where our kids take the test and pass and do very well. We have 23 students that were enrolled in internships, and so we hope to continue to increase that. They all would work with us. And if you know students that want to pay internship, we have some grant monies. And so businesses can hire our kids and hopefully give them a job when they either go on to college or graduate from high school. So that's exciting program. Also, we right now have students that have already passed 594 credentials this past fall, and that's amazing considering how much we were out of school. And so it's a good thing. And then also our, we're first in North Carolina. This is a new class, a new course that was offered at the state, Certified Forestry Worker. And so we had our students take a natural resources to forestry students, and they are number one in the state. So that's also amazing. Really proud of our kids. And so, you know, when I think about these stats, it's not only that we have smart kids, but we do have great teachers. But also you all have been, you know, part of that. I think about all the times we've met. Now, this is probably our fifth or sixth time that we've met. And, you know, I do want to say thank you. Thank you for you supporting us in laptops and technology. We now have, where we're replacing the laptops, you know, we wanted a sustainable plan. So we're buying laptops in second grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade. So follow us the kids along. And so thank you all for that. Y'all have also supported Middle School Project. So next door, two rooms over, they've been dissecting sheep brains. And so you can see that next door a few months, a little formaldehyde smell, just a little bit. But kids have been doing that this week. And the high school SRO, love having an SRO officer in every school. And y'all gave us another extra one, so that's fantastic. High school guidance, gave us another guidance counselor to help us there in mental health. Thank goodness she did, you know. And that's helping our kids. ESL teacher, thank goodness she did that too, with all the Hispanic children that live here, families feel welcome. And CTE, our kids are loving that class, and they're loving our animal science class. So you all have really, you know, through the years, supported us. You've helped and increased our funding. And so for that, I really want to say thank you, that means a lot to our students. So continued areas of focus, just so that you see, we do do work on the science of reading. And something's being changed in North Carolina, but I think it's going to break for our kids. Math, kids who are willing math, we want to help them make growth. Attendance encourages them to be at school. We really have to work on that. Setting goals in the schools, technology, AI, we know that that's coming and that's here. Teaching our kids and our teachers how to use it appropriately. Power School is changing over to Infinite Campus. So if you ever hear anybody talk about that training that's coming next year for our teachers. Of course, our district webpages, Marie, Sonia, they've helped a lot of that. It's great keeping everybody up to date. Workforce development, career development plans for our students. We know that in middle school, high school, they're not going to know what they want to do, but at least we've got some programs now that will open those doors and let them see what some of the options are. And our facility study and long range plans, y'all have just supported us all along the way with that. And we really do appreciate it. Also then, you know, what is that we can try to do for our community is enroll. Obviously, we want to keep our students happy and healthy and safe. Dr. Cox does an outstanding job with our school safety grants, and she's also worked with our SRO officers. She loves the doors and blocks. We switched to Master Key, and she has really, how many doors do we have in home?
Oh, my gosh, I'm telling you, I feel like a million.
A million. We have a million doors. So she has been around all the campuses and helped with that, the lighting. And she's just did a great job with that achievement. She and Andrea really worked hard, also working with our teachers as far as academics. A high graduation rate, I know Derek continues, we have conversations about that, wanting to keep our kids in school and have them to graduate. And then, you know, preparing our kids for whatever's next. And so that's really important to all of us. This next one, I wanted to put this slide in because I realize what an outstanding job I feel like everybody in the county did. The storm in September was just unbelievable. Never seen anything like it. I was moved when Hurricane Hugo came through, and that was nothing compared to what we went through in September. And you all just really, the decisions that you had to make, the decisions you're still having to make, I know it's been very difficult. And I really do feel like when I was talking with my colleagues and stuff, and I know there are damages all across western North Carolina, but I honestly feel like, you know, when you look at the overall damages that we had throughout the community, I feel like, you know, Yance County was almost like the epicenter, you know, of that storm when you think about it. And, you know, you all just, you know, sticking together, holding in. And so, you know, I want to say thank you for that. Thank you for everything that you did. And, you know, our team worked hard, our teachers worked hard, my directors, my principals, everybody, the shelters, distribution sites that we did on our campuses. We're still supporting, you know, everybody through the long-term recovery. And just know that we're here, you know, for you all, whatever they need, we need help. I spent a lot of time, probably after two weeks into the storm, of really having to focus them on my role. And we're still, Monday after that Friday, Kim and I went to Michael because we had to meet the state inspector. And we had to make some more decisions, you know, three, four, five days after the storm, just figuring out who needs to come and look, who needs to do assessments, how do we get started? And then, you know, our team just looking at where are we going to relocate, 199 kids, 198 kids. And so we did do the eight classrooms to Burnsville and three classrooms to Southto. We then had three weeks to do so. So thank goodness for our maintenance team and the National Guard and those that helped us to move, because we had to go through and figure out what is damaged and what has to stay that's circled for opening up clean and what to go with us. So setting up these 11 classrooms was something. And folks did a really good job of getting that together. Since that time then, probably after some of those decisions were made, I know then probably October, in October, we really focused. I know it was the time where Kim and Heather and I just shut the door. And we had to really focus because state grants were coming out. And we had to make some decisions then about kind of prioritizing because we had, you know, damage on neighbor campuses. And so we also had to, I know you all were in the bigger picture, you know, working on the water and the sewer and the electricity and all those things. And we were having to narrow it down per school because we had to go through inspections in the health department. And I'll show you before we leave in a minute, there is a crack here in the wall that I wanted you to see that was caused by the storm. Had never been there before. It's due to the roof lifting up. And so we had the engineers to come, and it can be fixed. But, you know, it's taken money and time and figuring that out. And the roof has been repaired, so I think we even said that that has helped. And so now it reflects those cement tiles and now just sealing up the crack so it doesn't continue. But they had to drill holes for the holes in the sink. And so, you know, we've had to do that the last couple of weeks or months. But we secured 13.5 billion. And, you know, with that, some of that was mental health, physicians, child nutrition salaries, child nutrition equipment, technology repair funds. We had damages, you know, to a lot of our laptops and things. And then the facility repair funds was the biggest piece of that, 12.9. The high school roof is going to be replaced, which is huge because it's lost work footage. And then we get to replace the middle school and high school, the floors and bleachers, the windows. And we had five select failures. You saw one of them when you drove in. And so there's several at the high school that are in the theater. We had to figure that out, get it fixed. And then down towards the football field, we had several. And so we're still just kind of dealing with those as time goes along. We also secured a U.S. Department of Education grant. That just came through the other day. So we're pleased that that one is going to be seen. And it's around 164,000 APs for tutors. We did hire, I think tutors, 27.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven tutors this semester. We've had all schools across, and they're really working hard to keep our kids on, heading back on track. Providing a little health support, we did have the Southern Regional Education Boards and a team. They're trying councils from all over North Carolina in the first place that they've been deployed. And so they came in and they've been helping our teachers last couple of weeks and talking with our students and really just to help overall with mental health. Center for Resilience Learning, a lot will be coming from Ashville and working with, I believe, as far as well in Southto. And of course, we have the Employee Assistance Network, which I think you all do too, and kind of part of that AP. That's worked that well too for our teachers. The picture that I have up there is, it's not one of our distribution sites, although that's kind of what they did look like for the seven weeks. But this is actually from, really from Thanksgiving till the week before Christmas. And that was the Burnsville Gym, where we had people from everywhere, all over the state, everywhere bringing in, those were toys, bicycles, skateboards, helmets, Barbie dolls. It just, it was unbelievable. So our kids, we wanted them to have a great Christmas. And so we started over 700 families in that time. So it was really amazing. My friends up in Ash County, superintendent sat down with me, and we brought in 315 Easter hams and got those meals and those boxes out, secured donations and grant funds, our Springfield trips then, I'm worried all kids don't worry about that because that's one of the first things we thought. You know, we didn't want to fundraise. We didn't want parents to have to worry about whether people are on a trip or not. So we raised, my superintendent friends were awesome, you know, bringing money in from anywhere, friends from T. So Christmas cheer, employee assistance, we have some employees that have lost their homes, as is you all, and chair's office and tiny homes. And I'm really proud of our carpentry class. I know you've seen them, that's been around for a long time. They're, it was an incredible company. They had an appearance on Blue Port in America not too long ago. And now, pleased to announce, let you know, this old house is coming to film. And they'll be here in a week or so, I don't know if they want to know the date of time. But we are really pleased that that's able to take place in that house.
You have a little support?
And Jeremy said, actually, he became a carpenter because of that show. So I think he's really excited about it. I watched it for years and things.
Oh, yeah. I watch it also.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to, for community peace, maybe. So, yeah. All right. And then, from there, this year, we did bring in $4 billion in various projects. Some of that was band instruments to PPE equipment, art supplies, just different things. We needed some extra funds for the addition at Blue Ridge. So, you know, thank overall, I have Rita, she's the one that's keeping them running, Talis. She's over 50 some, 56 some million that we brought in in the last several years. And of course, Raul Brach is a huge piece of that, helping us to write grants. And Kim and Heather sent the other team, it's really been successful. We did find out just the other day, I know Andrea was a big piece of this, she's really excited, and I just hope you heard, and Jonathan Blackburn up in Avery is excited about this. And so this is money for after school and summer school. It's a 21st century grant, it's a federal grant. And so it's been 1.5 million for three years, is about half a million for each year. So we're really excited that we can continue on and continue to stuff our kids. This picture is the addition at Blue Ridge, and that's coming along. If you ever get a chance, just drive up to the top of the drive, you can't look down on it. It's beautiful. It's going to be 12 classrooms. And then this is the addition at Burnsville, what it's going to look like, and it's 14 classrooms. And I know that sounds like a lot, but by the time we move the kids in Michael, get them out of, they're all little places right now, tutoring rooms and the media center and the gym, and they're just everywhere. So once we get to spread them out a bit, there are 497 kids right now at Burnsville. They're the second largest school next to the high school in the county. I think Blue Ridge is sitting at 370, 380, something like that. And I want to share these numbers with you because, you know, once we open these, this is going to be open in August, kids will get to move in August. This one will be open in December, so we probably won't move in a later time, wait till next June. But, you know, from our estimation and thinking about, and these are some numbers I'm going to give to you, then we have like four to five extra classrooms in each building for the next 10 years of growth. And you and I both see what's taking place in Yance County, traffic to the first, to the marriage license, to the home license. And some of that is folks that did lose their homes, we know that they are rebuilding. But it's funny, we've been having all these planning sessions and discussion that, you know, and having grown up in Henderson County, and I see, you know, I see what Bamar looks like now in Black Mountain. And I went to Waynesville last week for the state school board meeting. They've got a drive through Starbucks now. All those years of being drop-fished over there, I never thought I'd see that in Waynesville. Nothing against my friends in Waynesville, but, you know. And so when I give you, funny that Marie sent this to me then, she found the stat, she turned over this page. And this is from the State School Boards Association. It was a report that they did for the, it's a legislative report. And so when you look down the list, and the title is, is the five-year enrollment forecast. And since I've been here, you know, folks are saying, oh, you know, we've kept the same numbers we've had for how many years, and, you know, we build a school every 10, 20, 30 years. So here's some of that proof. Now it's in writing. And if you look, Yance County Schools is number three on that list. When I read it, I kind of chuckled because they got the number wrong. They're already 25 students short when they look at this, where we are right now. And, you know, they're saying by 2030, which is just in five years, that we're going to gain another 241 kids. And, you know, when I see that, and I, every week we get kids that trickle in, just from different counties, different states. It's amazing too. It's a good place to be, but any thoughts on, you see that?
At the elementary school level, that's 12, 14 classrooms. That's 12, 14 classrooms at the elementary school level.
You know, something stands out to me, I remember when I came on the school board, I was given a sheet like we've got, and it gave the projected growth for the next 10 years. And it was a steady decline all the way. It's just, it's amazing, the people that want to be here, that they want to be here. They want to be here because of the community, because of who the people are. They want to be here because their kids are getting a good education. They don't question that. And that's huge to me. I mean, that speaks volumes for Yance County.
Well, and if you, you know, it would be interesting then to see if you gain another 200 kids every five years. And that's possible. Because you have, I see our graduates, but, you know, you always have out of the 100 and, we got 150 not graduating, you always have about 70 or 80 that are staying home still. You know, they're going to stay on the family farm, like I said, they'll be here, and they're going to eventually have kids and families and everything, you know. So when you add up that number in 2030, that is 2,308 kids. So that's a lot of students, you know. So I just wanted you to see that as you're planning and you're talking and you're having your sessions and just, I want us to stay ahead of it. I say, I see so many districts then that end up, you know, they don't pay attention to these numbers, and then they end up bringing in no wins. And that is not a, I mean, sometimes you've got to do that, but safety wise, that's awful. You know, the storms we have, the snow walking out, the snow and the ice, or trying to, you know, the SROs having to, you know, go around and then maintain them and all that kind of things. So I think, you know, if you can really try to stay ahead of the building, firm of the facilities, that, you know, would be a really good thing. So, you know, for me, and I may be wrong on this, but I perceive one day having the four elementary schools, the two middle schools, and the one high school, yeah. And here, on your middle schools, you could add on a sixth grade wing. There would be a way to do that. Our architects and everybody said that, you know, if you get to that point, you can do that. So that would be a good thing. Our high school could hold up to 800, you know, 700, 800 pretty easily. Probably need to do some reconfiguring, and we'll talk about that in minutes and things that need to be done there. But.
I'm sure when you get done with the additions for Blue Ridge and Burnsville, what's your capacity come up?
Our hope is to be number one in like, in like, and that's the other thing, you know, the school board's going to have to decide, how big do you want those schools to be? I've led elementary schools where I've had, you know, 490 to, I think 630 was the biggest. And, you know, when you get over 500, even if you have an AP, just the supervision, little kids are everywhere, and it's bus routes and, you know, hiring of teachers and it's a lot. And I know in some counties that is, you know, a lot of them have middle schools at 800, you know. But we also see what some of those other counties are facing, the discipline and what not. And so I feel like here, we have been very blessed and worked hard to keep this going. But that's 420 what I have as, what I would say for largest of 11. So when we look at, then, you know, I see a year or two ago, I'm like, oh, okay, I guess we can do that. But it changes, you know, and this is how you all can all kind of help me too, when I think about future planning also. And this is where I need you to advocate because it could also help to save us some money. And I know we all kind of like that, which is a good thing. But because of, we felt like, you know, we really have more power on grants and things like that, and we're not, you know, we had some plans last year and been bored with some things, but we know then, also facility wise, we had to really look at where we are and are we ready for some of those things? And, you know, it really said in our board review, the devastation that we had in the county. And we know that you have had to, everybody's like, oh, you know, go ahead and do that to 100, that you'll be reimbursed. Well, it sounds great, and I realize that, even for us and FIBA and all that and insurance money, but that could be three to seven years down the road, you know, and years. So we get that. And we know, you know, having to look at the taxes and changes and just a lot of different things that y'all face. And we felt like that's why we're not going to replace it maybe this year. We did that one time here COVID. We did that one time here, COVID, I felt like that was the right thing, we had some federal monies, and now we have some state monies, and I just think that that's kinda where we all need to just pay. Looking down the road, as you all get things settled out, and figure out where you're at and how things look, we have a salary study done, and I have requested this, because one of us, I think I kinda borrowed from you a little bit, but I, I felt like as we were hiring folks and figuring out where are they at, and the steps that we have in the state categories, and bus drivers, child nutrition, custodians, TAs, you know, all these folks that, that really help us a lot. And we got that report the other day, and so, some counties that have those studies done, there are, there are big, big gaps, there are gaps, but not as bad as it could have been, you know. And so, that's where our board will be talking about, you know, can we afford to go ahead and move forward with that this year? There's things that we're gonna be talking about and looking at, and then again, your support for that down the road. And again, our, we wanna be competitive, you know, with other school communities and hiring folks. Our pre-K plans, this is where you can help me. I would love for the state to, to go ahead and do universal pre-K, and that's something that I hope may be a negotiating point, that talk about for years. And now, if we have a facility and have the rooms, you know, could we move forward with that? And it may be that that's something for the state. The capital requests for the match for the high school, we did have our facility study the other day, that our architects presented to the board in our planning session, and it went well. We saw where all the repairs are that need to be done, and then also, you know, can we, later on, but can we have a, you know, office area that's secure, that, that really probably needs to happen? By doing that, we can move some classrooms around, get some departments together, CTE Career and Innovative Center would be great, to have that, that space for our students, and then also the hospital or gym and shelter. I'd love to see that our ball teams would have to practice some late, and have that, that area. If you go into the next two years, still in the other half of that salary study, and pre-K plans, I'd love the state to help us with those pre-K plans. And then, we talked about planning an HVAC. We know that that is something that our kids could build an entire house, you know, and that's an awesome thing, to help that training, they're already able to do the basic work, the foundation work, digging out the foundations, electrical weeks, we're already doing all that, and seeing how that'll kinda be the, the next piece of that. Any questions on those things? We know that that can change, and they can give support, but that's kinda what we're looking at, future planning. Those things, I want, those are all these things, but I can tell you, on our eight construction projects, I see many of them, Sato will be completely finished, roofed, floor, bathrooms, kitchen, this August, the punch list will be complete. Remodeling products here, and at Kane River will be finished this July and September. And then, additions, I mentioned that Burnsville will be finished in August, and Blue Ridge in December. We're adding on 6,000 square feet, the old building for heavy equipment and electrical, carpenters, boo, that will be finished June 26. Animal science program, there's your barn, Lynn, and so, it will be finished hopefully also June of 26. The stadium, we continue to work on the stadium. I do hope that the parking seating, well, parking bathrooms, change of the entrance will be finished, I hope, this August, September. Seating, seating is about 1.4 to 1.6, so that is why that has not happened yet. Thank you everybody for being patient with us, and bringing their seats and chairs and things like that. We have to take those bleachers up because liability-wise, people walk on them, and they, you know, after 40 years, concrete's solid. So, so I'm working on that. Aviation, we are starting those classes in the squares, thank our board for, for moving forward with that, and so, kids, Cynthia's worked really hard on that, we'll have drones. Kids can then go water market craft with me, the actual Johnson City Airport, GEA Aviation, so we're excited about that big gathering for our school. Then you can just go from there, finish some things about the high school and the grant. I must say, you know, I still thinking about workforce housing or employee housing, we all know how difficult it is to house a kid, and so, just for information there, the school and the elementary school, my dad's a part of it. From there, I must say, and I should've took a picture of Kid Mountain, because we, I'm loving that. The kids are, we've been watching it, you know, go up and then working on it, and it is incredible. I slammed, I said, "Tell me, who did that?" Because I'd love to have, maybe a smaller scale than our schools, but it is really awesome to talk about there. It was really good. And we're working on furniture desks. Heather, you wanna tell them about furniture desk lately?
Yeah, so, during the working, I was able to get up, tricked up the GS America, it's a, it's a school furniture company, and they very graciously wanted to donate, make a donation to us. And they originally reached out about a school, but I explained to them, really for us, if you take all our schools and put together, that's really the size of one school in some other places. And so, people are very understanding about that, and so, we went to, pre-K for third grade, and they're going to make us a donation, desks and chairs, and some storage, little units and things like that, and so, we're very excited about it, and it's almost half a million dollars that they're willing to donate. Yeah, and so, we hope to have that donation in the, in the fall. It'll be after school starts, but we'll transition and submit furniture. The company makes everything in Germany, and it's very, very sturdy, just reliable furniture, and so, that's just another blessing, we were saying through this, that people are just very, very good, they've got a good heart, so we're excited about that.
Awesome. Activity buses, we're gonna be getting an activity bus soon, we talked about that, and then Dogwood Health Trust, we do have a CTE bus now, that's gonna be taking kids over to the Osba Building, and then also out each period, or somehow during the day, taking kids and dropping them off at internship, so they don't know where to park, they don't have to occupy these or the car or whatnot, that we can get them out. Hopefully see some places to work in Yates County, so we're excited about that. Again, the state, we've talked to them about allotment, the allotment for assistant principals hasn't changed in four years, five years. It's one assistant principal, part 500 kids, so we've been advocating for that, it'd be a big help to us, I'd love to see, because then your succession plan and leadership and getting, you know, folks ready for principals move, retire, and so, you're just, you know, getting them ready for the next steps in their career. So, hopefully we'd love to see if we could get some assistant principals coming up. And then, you know, long, long range, you know, just continuing along, we've built a new store shed, Miss Horn and other elementary schools, sixth grade wing additions, and secure funds for the county office. We need a tech building, I've talked about that, so after we combine the two, then we'll do that. But that's gonna be about across the 15 or beyond, to work on those things. So, any other questions, any other thoughts?
Quite a few questions, but I do want to make a couple moments. One, one thing that I really like about this school board and our interaction and the way it goes, we, we try to be very proactive, instead of reactive to all the situations that come our way. And you guys have done the same thing. I appreciate how y'all have done that, being proactive with everything, and it shows. And that's how you develop, that's how you, how you make things happen. And I really appreciate y'all doing that. Like your workforce development program, and how you guys are focusing on that, that's the real work, and I'm telling y'all, you need to be accommodated, and I'm telling you, it's amazing. I, I've heard in several places in the High Country, I sit on the High Country Council Board, and they talk about what's going on in Yates County, and what's going on in Yates County schools, we appreciate that. And we're proud to partner with y'all, with what are we up against, and you guys just need to be prepared. And we need to be, thanks you all, and thanks for this. And it makes, makes our job easier, I've been a commissioner 13 years, and as Edwin said, has said several times, it's not always been this way. It's not always, we've not always had this, this camaraderie and the, the team effort, and I really appreciate it. Thank you for everything you've done, and including us, and I hope that we're doing the same for y'all. I hope that we're making it easy for y'all to come to us, just like y'all made it easy for us. So, bye, we appreciate it.
I do want to thank y'all for including me during the storm, allowing me to come and be part of our meetings, and helping see what you needed, and it just helped include all of us, and I'm sure they do.
It's like, it's a partnership, and it should be a partnership.
One of the reasons I know we had Hurricane Lee and stuff, and one of the reasons we can't, we can take this year and say, you know, we're not asking for additional funding, is because we've been sufficiently funded by the commissioners, and we appreciate that. You know, we're not, every, every time, we're not turning around every time and saying, "We don't have money for this, we don't have money for this," because we've been sufficiently funded, and it has made for a good partnership, and it's, I think it's showing in the success of our programs, of our students. That's, that's a piece of that, that's, that's helped us attain greatness in our school system, and we, we were talking about that a little bit today, in those meetings I was at. Yates County Schools is pretty far ahead of most school systems, especially in this area, and you guys have been a big part of that, and we appreciate what you guys have done through the years to, to help us get to this point.
I get to make with several different groups around western North Carolina, and the question does kind of, what's, what's going on in Yates County? I mean, you just had the major disaster, you're rebuilding as fast as anybody else has ever been. And truthfully, what I'm proud of about Yates County is we come together. At a time when it would've been very easy to have been, you know, about it, and conquered almost, but as long as I've been on the school board, there's always been a underlying rumble, I guess you'd say. But what I'm proud of is a group of people that's willing to go beyond that, look beyond that for the good of the county, and work together to make certain that what needs to happen, for the future of the county happens. Because it, folks, it's not just about us, it's about that next generation, it's about those grandchildren, those people, those people's moving here. They're coming here because they see something here, that they're not getting somewhere else. And for me, that's encouraging, it really is. And I don't think everybody, I think both boards, everybody involved, for what you do, because the general public has no idea what we do. And I think everybody here, see, well, admit, when they came on board, they had no idea really what it accomplished, but it takes a whole lot to make just small things happen. And for that, I, I say thank you, I mean, I appreciate everybody.
Appreciate everybody working together and doing the shelters, and that was huge, you know, whether it was school board member Cody getting out there and putting water into the shelter, you know, doing whatever we had to do, working the fire department, so everybody just pitched in everywhere that they, they could. And for that, that's why we're ahead, is because of our people. And we're all public servants, but it's because of our people, and begins right here in this room, and out in the community, and home nine yards. And so, I just want to give you a little glimpse of what we got going on in town. We're doing some water sewer projects that we're finishing up, or getting going good with the town of Burnsville. We do have a good partnership there, and we're thankful for that. Rilling some wells, as you know, at the elementary school out of Blue Ridge, which we think will help the town every day capacity, it'll help the school system, and help in case we needed a shelter. So, that was gonna be at Baker's Creek, and then the better project was to be, especially after Helene, I think that opened everybody's eyes, and we realized that the school was probably a good place to do it, and appreciate the partnership on that, because that was huge. And the town appreciates the partnership on that as well, because that's adding water into their system. Clean water, you know, a lot of times you hook a generator up, pump that water, we got water, you know, where the intake's down for 17 days. I mean, that's just the extra capacity flow there that we can run off generators, so that's, that's double good. We've got a lot of debris cleanup, you know, right away, waterway, and private property, working on that every day, made a community impact on that, and done it pretty quickly. Still got a lot to go, and we're still running on expedited funds there, so I know FEMA funding's kinda slow to come in sometimes, but we have received over $3 million in expedited funds, and we're still under that limit, so been able to, to do pretty good there. Of course, we're building back a lot, getting grants, Morgan's worked her butt off trying to give grants for the CBG program. Instead of $2 million, she got $4 million after Helene, just kind of at the right place in the grant timeline, at the right time when Helene hit, just the good Lord above looking out for us, and was able to double that to $4 million. So, she's getting going on that, and that's gonna be a huge undertaking, getting 20 houses out to the community. So, that's where we were able to do five to 10, and now we're able to do, you know, upwards of 20. Rainbow Park, building that, building back, if we, or not back, but that was in the plan in the beginning, we forget we had projects prior to Helene. With, if the Helene hadn't hit, that would finish up, that and Kid Mountain would finish up, and have our parks in pristine condition. But as you guys know, now Kane River Park, the commissioners is looking to see what we can do there with working with FEMA, and also our engineers, to see what our options are there. We appreciate the partnership on the ball fields, as well as with the churches and stuff that's allowed us to use those ball fields. We have more kids than ever, I recorded last night, which is a good thing coming out. I always say you keep these dirty, it keeps us clean, keep them busy, but right now, we're kind of sporadically throughout the county where we can play and practice and that kind of thing. So, thank you for the partnership on the fields. We know that's stretching you guys thin a little bit, especially here during baseball and softball season, but thank you for that.
Would it be possible to get lots up here at East Jancy, and to get Clermont open back up to the parks and use it? I have, I had two parents call me last night, they call all the time, want to use Clermont, they want to be able to play later up here.
Yeah. That could be something, be a grant thing that we've worked on, kinda like we did at Kane River Park, and you think, well, you could just upgrade those and take them and put them back in the ground somewhere, but it's a pretty big undertaking. Those are laser labeled and everything, of course, they're on some big concrete fillers in the ground, and big old bolts, and it, it's a big undertaking, but we can look into seeing what we could do to get lots at these parks, because they are good practice fields, even if we had our fields, and they're also great playing and game fields, so.
They're wanting to play at Clermont, but Donnie wouldn't let us take over, because we don't have insurance to tell people to play. He said parks are ready to be.
Yes, we do hold insurance for the youth league sports and stuff.
Would like to be something we can talk to French Brown about, ask him years coaching in Madison County, and do power, dumb down lights, everything we practice and play on Madison.
Now, unless French Brown's got some new grants or something coming through, they did help us try to, they said they'd help us with putting the poles up when we did Kane River Park, but they didn't support that in any way, we paid for power. We paid for power, we ran it down there, and brought the transformer, and home nine yards, so. I've not seen that in the past on Cane River Park, but it doesn't mean that they want the future, so. They have been good partners as far as, we have some, we have CAD money or some, working with them on getting a broad plan back through the county and different things. So we have had a good partnership with them. I just don't know that they have funding for that, but it wouldn't hurt to ask. Duke, as you know, is in our county too. I had a meeting on the 23rd with the lady from Duke, so I can throw that out there. They're the very tip of our county, not all the way through like many French Broad's, but still tries to be a partner, and I think French Broad, Bible, and Howard from Duke anyway, so maybe there's some sort of partnership there that we could look into. So Kid Mountain's looking to be open on the 19th this month, so we're going to have the grand opening, so for sure, step across the road there and help us cut the ribbon.
Right.
We'll get some information out there. Morgan will be sure and get you the invitation there.
We all need to go down and slide, you tell me.
Yes.
Why not have to?
The sheriff's office and dispatch center is well underway, we did a groundbreaking right before Helene hit. And so they continued on after the weather broke, where they could start digging and getting another, and as you see, it's coming up out of the ground pretty good. So we're excited about that, and we realized there in Helene that we needed that even more because of the ERC. We were out at the senior center at the high school for a little while, so thanks for letting us just take over and get wherever we could get, so we learned a lot for sure. Yance County Transportation just finished up, had their grand opening about a month or two ago. Yance County campground, we're looking to see what we can do up there, it's just a beachy area right now, but we got engineers up there, and FEMA's on board with coming to do an inspection. Of course, we partnered with y'all in the school projects, proud of those. Kim and Randy work really good together, glad of that partnership too, hand in hand, whatever we do to help each other accomplish a common goal there. And of course, you know, we're taking over the library, GLI-1, so we look forward to maybe partnering with some of the schools who do the projects, summer reading, cross train, and some other things with the kids, so.
How'd you?
We'll be glad to partner or work on any programs together that you can see, especially with the summer months, or even during the school year, even with pre-K or whatever you guys have going on. So just thank to us as a resource, and there's a lot of money out there for different curriculums to help, that might loosen up some funds on your end by the library providing that. So just, we would ask you to reach out, any kind of things you can see that would help them through the summer, to prepare for the next year.
And we're proud to have y'all with the library, I think it would help bring some people in that don't normally use the library, and that's, that's our goal, get more people to use it. And y'all are one of the great resources with some of that, because they take the granted, the kids use the library system tier, but we want some of them to kind of get involved more with that, so I think that would be awesome. And we appreciate it.
And then, we have a lot more going on, but just one more thing we could get into. I tell Kathy, we talk trash sometimes because landfill, you know, we talk crap sometimes, that's a sugar. But it really is, you know, but she'll be like, guess what we got going on? I say, guess what we got going on? And so we, we joke about that a little bit, but one thing I do want to be serious about is we have some opioid funds, and Morgan is putting that out, she's already put it out. So I was just thinking about your counselors, any kind of prevention, preventative measures through the counselors or anything like that, that's some funds that you can apply for, and you have sent it to Kristen, you got that?
I did.
So she does have that, we encourage you guys to apply, and the county is responsible for those funds. It has to go for opioid abuse, use of prevention. So we're working with a lot of, some of our mental health providers, folks in the, in the community that does that type of thing, and trying to get those funds in the right hands. Of course, we're just now taking, put out a notice, so we're taking applications and that kind of thing. So be sure that we're, we could loosen up funds in other areas, you know, you could use our funding for certain programming that would fit in that opioid category, and we expect to get over between $3 and $4 billion, and that would be stretched out over 18 years. So it's, it is a broad time, that's part of that opioid settlement. So just keep that in the back of your mind, you know, if it's 20, 30, 40, 50,000 a year, might be very doable, but we are looking for applications, so. And we have put that out to the whole community. And other counties have it available, American, so it's just pretty easy, so. Any, any questions on that, or anything we're doing?
So, you know, I'm just, kind of thinking a little bit outside the box, this is just some thoughts, and I just want to throw these out there. We're Spalm County, and obviously we have the resources we have, we need to use wisely. And so I don't know what the plans are for recreation, especially for the youth recreation for the county, but I think we're in partnership together with the schools and the youth leagues would be good. We could probably, for example, I mean, you know, upgrade ball fields and stuff like that, where they can be used during the school day, but they can also be used for the youth league in the afternoons and the evenings. I don't know what the plans are for the future, but I know Cane River Park's flooded down four or five times, so I don't know if that's going to be a viable answer going forward. But if we could bust up all fields at, at schools that can be utilized during leave periods and stuff like that, with the kids outdoors and doing stuff, and then used for practice and gangs and stuff like that, with the youth league in the evenings and stuff like that. So I'm just trying to think out of the box, and some of those areas where, you know, everything gets dual use and stuff like that, so just having a ballpark at a certain place, and, you know, it's not used except for practice and youth league. So some dual purpose uses. And I know we do that in some things, I mean, like at track at High School and stuff like that, people come, I can do this and that. So I'm just trying to think out of the box, where we can share things, and share funding and stuff like that, to try to just improve, you know, what we have. I do, I, I, I love, well, I know you guys, and I know you do advocate for us, but, you know, obviously, our funding comes from local, state, federal sources. So anytime you can advocate for the school system on a state level, it's great with our representatives and stuff like that. And I know you do, but any extra funding we get, I, I promise you, it'd be money well spent, because, I mean, the things that we do here, so I would think, besides the church, the church is number one as far as the influence of the community as a whole, but our public schools in Yance County and rural communities typically is second, is the runner up. And it, and, but it also brings the entire community together. Some of our churches are smaller, and it brings groups of people together, but our schools bring the whole community together, so. And I think that in rural areas, and a lot of times, your public schools is what makes your community. I, I know that 30 years ago, when I was in education, when I was a student, I had a professor stand up there and say, rural areas in North Carolina are going to die. In 30 years, they're going to be dead. They're going to be hollowed. There's not going to be any jobs there. All that's going to be left is desolation. And, you know, with local people in the priding community and stuff like that, we've seen the opposite happen. And key to that is, is, you know, and I, and I even thought this, you know, even when I was growing up, it was brain drain, you know? Most of our kids that went on to four-year colleges, they never came back, because there weren't any jobs and employment there. But the times have changed, and people can work online, we've got manufacturing, defense manufacturing in a 40-mile radius, it's up to label, so our kids can come back here to live. And then also, those dying professions, I remember talking about the dying officials, that's the ones, you know, where you go out, whale, or plum, or you do all those things. We're advocating for that, and we need those people. You know, some weren't along the line, especially my generation, and needed the generation after me, we forgot about that. We forgot that we had to have people do those jobs. You know what I'm saying? And so now, our county is poised to be, I mean, here we got, our CTU programs are unbelievable, and we want to look to do more of them. And I just think, you know, that support of our public education system in a local area is paramount to what happens here in the future of what we've got going forward, so. I appreciate you guys advocacy, I appreciate your support. Obviously, it takes money to do those things, and our people in the education system, we're pushing for grants, I mean, obviously, we work as hard as we can, and there greatly can, to help our kids. But, I mean, Morgan's a little, little man, you know, I want him to see how about, have him, him have every opportunity he could possibly have. And I want to make this, you know, used to, people thought, well, you live in the city or urban area, you had it made. Well, no, I want them to be here and have it made here, because they're going to have every opportunity and more opportunities than you would have in those environments. And I think that we're there, we're getting close, we're, we're, in some ways, I think we should perceive that, especially in our CTU programs, you know? And so, just advocate for us, every chance you get, advocate for our public schools here in Yance County, because it's so important to this rural area, it's our public education system.
I'll talk to people across the state in education, and they're, they're looking at it. I mean, CBG program, offline, they, they see what's going on in Yance County, and like it's been a long time. I've seen you guys all the news, and it's not what you were doing, and how do you know that?
It's amazing, and, and, you know, we, I mean, we do what we can, but our funding's not, I mean, there's other places that get a lot more funding than us, and they're in bad shape. I mean, I just look at the tourism dollars that they're getting against, and all the advantages they have locally that we don't have, because we, we don't have the same exact tax base as they've got, we don't have the tourism they have. I mean, ours is strong and been growing, but still, theirs has been traditionally up there a long time, and, I mean, I mean, their programs, they don't, they don't outshine us in any way, shape, or form. So, and that comes down to our people, you know? We've got unbelievable educators in Yance County, and dedicated people, and they love our kids, and, you know, we're blessed. And I've always told people, oh, you're in education, how do you put up there? You don't even know, I mean, we, we're blessed, and I've always said, I'm blessed. I started out in Martin County. So I tell you, there's a difference, yes, there's a huge difference, it's not even close. It's not that there's not bad kids over there, there's some really good kids over there, but that percentage of good kids here is just unbelievable. And so, and our educators are second to none, looking at dots and what he's done with that program, Masonry, Heart of Green. People come up here, and I've had kids look out the window and say, this must be a rich school. I had a kid on the Henshaw County end, looking out the window there, and saying, this must be a rich school.
You have a lot of advantage there.
You know, we are rich. We may not be rich with money, but we're rich with people. And, you know, people's worth more than money. If you've got quality people, that's more important than money anything. I believe in good people than money anything. And we are rich, if you think of it that way.
Well, we're very rich.
That's exactly right, heritage is important. And that's, I just make a comment with our new county director out there, said, you know, this is the 50th year of sports in Mount Harris. Now, it's only the 49th year of Mount Harris, when we started sports, you heard, they brought these kids to get here together. And I said, it's about time for Halloween. I said, you, you contact me, me and my friend, whatever, I said, let's, let's think about moving forward, having a Halloween. After 50 years, we should have at least somebody worthy of a Halloween, wouldn't you think so? So, but I mean, and I, and I said, you know, we are heritage, is what I looked at and said, we are heritage. You know what that means, right? So, I mean, and that's absolutely true, it's our heritage, and, but, I mean, it's just, I appreciate everything you guys can do for us, and, but, and appreciate everything you have for us.
There's one thing we haven't really mentioned a lot yet in this meeting, but that makes us very successful in the school system and in the county, that's our community partnerships. The professionals and the organizations in this county willing to do things for their own people is unbelievable. And that's one thing that helps make, make each one of us very successful. And that, to kind of tie it into everything we've talked about, there's one thing that makes me proud here is, both sides, y'all and us, are willing to look 10, 15 years down the road, and anytime you do that, you're going to have absorbent numbers when you look at these papers, because you're speculating. But no one has ever been like, oh, look at that number, ain't no way that's happening. Or, oh, there's no way that, yeah, no. No is never an answer, because we all have the same goal in seeing our, our kids and our community succeed. And the growth that, that we saw there in this county and in our, and in our system really needs to come from our long-term goals and our aspirations, and hopefully, most of that growth, we're going to fill with our own people, our own kids. You know, 10 years from now, my oldest is going to be either going to college or, or, or getting a job here.
As a grandma.
Yeah. But, but that's one thing that, that helps make our community and our county sustainable, is if we're filling these roles with our own people. They can keep up the community partnerships, and they'll want to keep up the community partnerships for the success of this place. So I appreciate the mutual understanding and mutual relationships that can foster that progressive outlook on what we're doing. And it really makes all of us that have kids in the system feel very comfortable and very blessed that our kids are here, because we know they're going to have a future. We're not looking three or four years down the road, because if you, if that's all you do, at the end of that three or four years, you're going to be out, without. And it's, we're very blessed here, very fortunate, I'm glad my kids are in school here, that we live here, I wouldn't want to be where us, but I thank you all for everything you do to help us.
Listen, I'm going to give a huge shout out, kudos to the staff, Kathy, for the grants. We can go back on their last few pamphlets, maybe four years ago, five years ago, when we'd say, what kind of grants you getting, Kathy? And she'd tell us stuff she needed to, and we'd lunch together, son, and she'd look at me like, oh, and that was before the Robert days and all that, maybe back before COVID. But anyway, that's astonishing. But now, you know, we got $4 million, you know, we got another $1.5 for three years. That's awesome, because, you know, we look out for grants, and you guys are working just as hard looking for grants, and, you know, we don't care, and I think commissioners share the same sentiment, is we don't care to work right along beside you and dig that ditch, but we want you digging it with us, and helping get these grants, and us helping get grants and loosen up funds, so kudos on the grants, that's huge, and sometimes they're hard to get in small. And, you know, our budget is very small, our tax base compared to our, our budget. So we get a lot of grants, we get a lot of income different places, like you said, state level, whatever, different things come in, so kudos on getting more funding. We all have to look for funding, and you guys are playing the game very well, and it is, it's a seeing what's out there and picking up all the, I call them quarters, and put them in your pocket to spend, and, and make a better place for the future, you know? And Helene hit, and how do we get prepared even better later? If we had to go through this, since we did, how do we prepare and be more resilient in the future? And I think that's the way you guys are looking on your five-year plan, and I know that's what the commissioners' goal is, is to become resilient with the, the funding like this, so.
And that, you know, and just kind of piggyback on that, so, I think our schools were pretty, you know, they were used quite a bit during Helene, and so I don't know if it's possible or not, but if we can get any help to mitigate some of the things, I know that Ms. Amos has told us and talked to us about making our schools self-sufficient, no words, having backup generators for electricity. in case everything goes down, digging wells so they can have water if the water system's cut off and things like that. So we know that there are hubs and disasters and if we could, you know, I don't know, some more down the future, if we share some of the thoughts there from this federal money.
We're already putting some wells in it.
Yeah, and over there, but I mean, have one at each school where we, I mean, South Funs already, but I mean, they need generators, backup generators to where we can operate there. And if we have to bring National Guard and people like we did, then we've got that electricity online already.
And Ronnie, I think you're going to see some emergency preparedness money come down.
It's coming down here.
I think you will, it's not there yet, but I think.
It's so it's working.
Conversation, a lot broader picture than just the education.
Yeah.
And every meeting that Morgan I've been to, that's one of the main topics is preparedness. And every county is different now. The seven county, high country county region, we're basically the same, but each county's unique.
Yeah.
And they're going to be custom because they can't just make a broad brush.
Yeah.
Fix all these situations because it may be fire departments in one county, but it's schools in another.
Exactly.
And they may have preparedness shelters in another county as well. So that conversation's being had across the state.
So you think that things will come down eventually, hopefully?
We're hoping.
Yeah, and so maybe we could use some of those.
We sure can.
There's no point in that to make them prepared.
We'll definitely keep it in mind, you know, if we see a thing like that.
That's kind of advocacy.
It's good to go where you stand. I promise you it's going to filter to the D.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Whether it's schools, fire department, whatever.
And that's kind of advocacy, I was kind of looking for it as far as putting that out there. But I know we house quite a few National Guard at high school buildings.
We had a big realization of appreciation of schools.
Yeah.
And fire.
And fire.
Yeah, and fire departments.
And it wasn't that we didn't already.
Oh, I know.
We, but I was just like.
But thank God we didn't have that resilience, you know, we had those things, you know, that.
Central hubs of the community. You know, and we're used to them fighting fires, wanting to fight the car wrecks and stuff. But we just, we realized how blessed we are to have them.
Yeah.
And what a huge center hub they are for each community, whether it's firefighting.
And they're willing to partner, just like y'all, willing to partner with us because it was a need, everybody coming in.
Listen, we couldn't get phone calls outright. And so I was at West Shanty Fire Department, they were overflowing. Where can we go? They had a key to Blue Ridge, do you think we could use Blue Ridge? I knew the answer to that because of our close relationship with y'all's board. And the commissioners knew the answer to that, you know? We couldn't just pick up the phone and call or send a text. They had a key to the school and right across, we started unloading. And we knew you guys would be okay with it. I mean, and, you know, if you wanted to give somebody a message, you hope to run into them at one of the distribution sites for the schools or something. So we appreciate that close relationship and knowing that if we really needed and found some need, we're not going to get backlash from you guys to help the community.
At the end of the day, we've got a new appreciation for all of our experts personally. We've got a new appreciation for everybody that stepped up and done what was right today. I don't think we'll ever go back to that, I think we'll never forget what's happened to it. I think it's a good thing. We learned truly how to appreciate the people we have.
Yeah, I talked to Jeff, Al and Derek. We had a call from the state meteorologists and all the superintendents together. So Wednesday, I kind of had a real good idea about lunchtime that we were going to have to close the studios to get ready. And so I called Jeff and Derek and I said, I know we've got these shelter plans, so whatever y'all need to do, you just need, you know, we'll be ready. Al, we can help. And so I'm glad that we had all those partnerships set up like you're saying so that we just kind of knew what, you know, did the best we could. And I think then that's why, you're right, we had such a response. So if you've come to help us, you know, they saw how hard we were working and they will jump in and help us too. So it's a good partnership all the way.
I don't like putting people on the spot. I don't like people on the spot myself. Mr. Ballin, if you don't care, tell everybody here what you told me out in the hallway talking about the last couple of weeks of school.
It's always the most stressful part of the year. However, we're feeling pretty good about things. So hopefully, hopefully going forward, we're going to do a whole lot better than what we initially thought. Early test results look pretty good in terms of like some stuff we've done around here. I ain't saying it's going to be as good as it always is, but talking to the teachers today, it ain't the feeling we had two months ago. So be happy.
Well, we got, you got to remember coming out of COVID even, I don't know if you realize this or not, but our school district did like ten points better than everybody in the region. It's caused our principals and leadership team and directors and, you know, we brought kids in on its own words. We did things up our outside blocks and, you know, kids didn't get so far behind and just like us bringing in tutors to help us. You know, we're always trying to think of ways to try to make it better. And we know we still have a lot of work to do, you know, and the summer, or our part of summer school and that kind of thing too. But, you know, I just want you all to know how very blessed we are. So we'll leave here and walk through, if you'll take a look, you know, down the hall and leave, you can show us a talk. This is, what you're seeing is, Kim, what'd you say, four point, four point eight million? From, all the roofs are new now on the school. They've gone through and done the lighting, you didn't realize how dim it was in here, dark, it's like a yellow kind of light. And then they're asking today, I said, oh, they replaced all of the hallways because the hallways are bright now. And you see the difference in the tile, the tile has probably been there for probably thirty, forty years, you know, it's switched now. So now the asbestos is gone. Hopefully not mold, you know, we've really worked hard to do HVA system, do more, the bathrooms, we had the terracotta tile for sixty years. Sixty years. So now, you know, looking at the bathrooms and girls in there just working on their hair, you know, in the bathrooms and all, mud and guys too. So it's just neat to watch the kids. It's an awesome, solid school to be a nineteen fifty-six school, you know, done well. And I hope to get to the last of them, you know, fifty, those hundred years. So I just want you to see your investment and you get a chance to look at the crack in the wall. Those are things, you know, we're so little, think of that and we've got good folks that'll do all that kind of stuff. So we just keep on keeping on.
Hey, before we leave, I think we would be remiss if we, we've been talking about the blessings, we've been talking about all the wonderful things that's gone on. And we'd give accolades to those that were very needed and I appreciate it. But I think we would do a very, very, very big disservice if we would be talking about all these blessings without hearing thanks and honor to the blessing. And if it's okay, I would like to take some liberty and pray and thank God for every single thing that He's done. And now He has, He has given us the ability and the understanding and knowledge and wisdom to be able to do these things because I promise you, I can't without it. And I think through this, if we're honest, we can see and realize from where our strength came, where our victory came, and from where our understanding and our knowledge came. Because I'm telling you, without Him, we couldn't have done what we've been able to do.
That's right.
And that's true. So if you give y'all the blessing, I would like to just, Heavenly Father, we sure do appreciate everything you've done for us. Every single thing that you do for us. And God, it would be a disservice to you if we were to come together with so many blessings that you've given to us and not say thank you for what you've done. God, we honor you, glorify you because you're worthy. And we thank you for the provisions that you've given us. And we ask and pray, God, that blessings be upon the school board, upon the school staff. Pray your blessings be upon the commission and upon our staff. Pray, God, you give us wisdom, understanding, guide us direction, we would understand and know exactly what your will is for us to do moving forward. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our communities. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our people and ask and pray, God, this partnership with the school board and the commission would be for your glory and your honor. We thank you for everything you've done for us, everything you've given us. Help us, God, never to take for granted what you do for us, but to take advantage of the things that you've done for us and give us. We love you, thank you for the first love in us, in Jesus' name.
Before we go, Miss Amos, can we adjourn our meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I have a motion, Madam Clerk. Do I hear a second? A second, all of you, say aye?